I make a motion to start the meeting. I'll make a motion to start the meeting.
Second. Okay, trustee Kachara, I'm sorry, member Kachara.
Hi.
Member Loda.
Hi.
Member Shannon.
Hi.
Member Marshall.
Hi.
And chairperson Belistras.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Um, did we want to start with my minutes or start with the?
Yeah, I think starting with minutes sounds like a good idea. I think we have to start first start with the COVID things and conflict of interest disclosure. So. Wedding is done is a little hard. I gotta reorient my whole setup here. Maybe I'll never be successful until November comes around. Anyway, so I guess first of all, with the conflict, the COVID disclosure is we're meeting virtually due to the coronavirus pandemic under directives from Governor Cuomo. And there is a link on the village website to that is available to the public. And if they follow that link, it will take you to the meeting. And the public is fully able to observe our deliberations today. We haven't zoomed before, so it might have a few hiccups. But hopefully this will work out pretty smoothly. Marina, you've worked this a fair amount. Is that correct?
Yes, I have.
And maybe I'm the only person here that never uses Zoom. I've used every other platform a fair amount but Zoom.
I've got a decent amount of experience on Zoom. Works pretty well. Yeah, the one thing I wouldn't mind having just a brief discussion after we're all opened up here about Zoom and Zoom features and sort of the mechanisms within Zoom that I prefer over others. Maybe as a board, we can come to a conclusion, the structure of the Zoom meetings.
All right, we can do that. But first, let's do our conflicts of interest disclosure. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose?
No.
No.
Loda, no.
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Dave. If you want to talk about any zoomy zoomness to maximize zoomeress.
These comments are fairly not super well thought out, other than there's two means by which I understand Zooms work. One is sort of a closed conference session where when we are public, it's just the members of the board. You don't really see, I don't know if the public sees or the conference directors, all of us, see who else is participating. But right now, for example, if you look at the meeting. Sorry, I'm getting a little feedback. You'll see a name Jim. I don't know who Jim is, but I actually see him on there. As a member of the public, if there was another, let's say there was a Bob, Jim, in the conference structure, Jim would not be able to see that Bob's there and Bob wouldn't see that Jim's there. It would just be some list of attendees somewhere. But in a meeting structure, as we have it set up right now, all attendees are visibly present. So we all know who as members of the community are there. We all know as members of, you know, outside the community that might be present. We don't necessarily have to require, you know, video or you know, voice availability, but you know, it might be nice to know who's attending the meetings. Now, I did reach out to somebody in the state about open meetings comments, and there's really not any requirement to do that. So the open meetings law, I'm just reading here from Paula Gilbert, who's a local government specialist, Division of Local Government Services in New York State. And I asked about open meetings and how these different mediums, what requirements are, and she said, "The open meetings law gives the public the right to attend, listen, and observe their government's official business. The public isn't required to speak at the public meeting as the board should be focused on conducting business at hand. However, if you do allow public comment in your meeting, you have to open comments to all members of the public. Public hearing, on the other hand, is the venue in which all blah 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 are afforded the right to speak. For all meetings, in person and virtual, a local government can ask a member of the public to identify themselves, but you cannot require it. The point is the comment itself, not the person who says it. So I would avoid using regulations about video cameras. Besides, some people may call in or don't have a camera. If they want to speak with a camera on, that's fine, but it shouldn't be a requirement. You can turn on an advisory opinion, or you can turn to an advisory opinion from the Committee of Open Government for further clarification. For, as for the attendee list, there is no requirement in open meetings law that requires a locality to identify public meeting attendees. You wouldn't receive an attendee list for a regular in-person meeting, so you don't have to provide one in a virtual meeting." Essentially saying either of these formats seems perfectly appropriate, and it's really up to our discretion as to which one we may find of more value to us. For me personally, I like the idea of having everybody be known and know who's attending. To me, it seems a little bit more open. But it's up for discussion and, you know, Justin, to that end, there is another structure in Zoom where instead of a meeting, it can be a conference again. So it's more closed to just us unless at the moment we invite somebody to speak, at which point we open them up, Marina would do that, and then she would close them off. So Marina, I don't know if you wanted to offer some comment. I know the Board of Trustees runs it in more of the conference structure than the meeting structure that we are here tonight.
Can you talk about webinar mode?
Sorry, what's that?
Webinar mode?
Yeah, webinar mode.
Okay.
Um, yeah, you are absolutely correct. Dorothea is kind of the, I guess, lead license on her, on our account with Zoom. So she has webinar mode, but I don't yet. So we are looking into getting that, seeing if it's necessary. I mean, if the board comes forward to her and requests it specifically, I'm sure she will go ahead and, you know, go for it. Regarding the open meetings law, you are absolutely correct. Whether we are in the meeting format or the webinar format, I will be able to see a list of attendees. If it's important to anybody to know, like, who attended a certain meeting, I can always pass that list along. But other than that, in the webinar format, you do not see other attendees. You're really only seeing the panel. And what Dorothea does is she invites each trustee to be a panelist, basically. And when they come on, they're already, their cameras, you know, they have all the squares and it's just their squares. Everybody who else who's an attendee would just show up in the chat list and will be able to comment through the Q and A function. So unless there's anything else specific.
I'm not even sure they show up in the chat list when it's in the webinar format.
Honestly, I don't think we should spend any more time on this. I think we should just keep using the system we have. I think having a list on the side that shows all the participants seems more of like, you know, the public can see who's attending meetings, which I think is important, just like if you were doing it in person as to a webinar mode where you don't see anybody. So it just seems more open to me. And I just wouldn't want to waste any more money trying to purchase a webinar mode that closes things down. So.
I like this format as well. So I just dovetail if everybody's in agreement. I don't think we need to spend any more time on it either. I like this format more than the webinar format.
Okay. Okay.
You're muted, Justin.
Justin, you're muted.
Spacebar.
Yeah, so my understanding is the public does not see the list of names that are attending. Is that correct right now?
They do see it right now.
Right now, they do. In the webinar format, they would not.
Marina, because I know when I've attended the trustees' meetings, the public has no visibility as to who is attending the meeting. And if we were to make this like a real meeting, if you attend Village Hall, you know who's there. And I think that's somewhat important because if you're presenting and you know you're, the applicant is presenting, and you know your two neighbors are there, that might change a little bit as to what you're presenting. And if they're not there and they promised they would show up, again, that might change what you're presenting. I think that's useful information. I certainly see no reason to withhold it.
I agree.
I can run it by Dorothea and see what she thinks about it. But like I said, there is a list at the end of the meeting on my dashboard. I can see a list of everybody who is in attendance at the meeting. So if anybody was interested in knowing, they could always ask.
We, we don't need to ask Dorothea because we're not switching to webinar mode.
Right.
So we have an open meeting right now. All the participants are listed right now. I, I would not vote to close that down. So.
Okay.
I think, I think we're done.
About that?
I agree. Okay, good. Thanks, everybody.
Hold on a second. So. Well, for example, Justin, can you see all the attendees that are there, that are here, even though you're not? Okay.
Yes, I can, because we're using the regular. Yeah, we're using the regular meeting instead of webinar. And we've gotten a little bit of pushback from some members of the public who aren't crazy about this, the, the use of the webinar format for village board meetings.
Open is open. All good.
I agree.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's move on then. Starting with meeting minutes, as was suggested, that sounds good to me. We can get this out of the way.
Do you want me to share those? Or has everybody had a chance to look at them?
I already went over them.
I'm good.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Comments at all in the minutes?
I have one question, if I may. In the past, you've attached the resolutions to the minutes. I didn't know whether they were missing from these minutes because they weren't finalized yet.
That's a very good observation. They should be in there.
They typically come later on. Hold on, if I can find an email where Justin sent them to me, I can put them up there as well.
I think those are resolved quite a while ago. I think I dropped off a signed copy at Village Hall a while ago.
Oh, yep. I, I found the email right here. We already took care of that. But yes, I am, I'm gonna see if I can find the scans and share them.
So if we're all okay with it, then let's make a motion to amend the meeting minutes to include all resolutions adopted in the meeting.
And, and to have that be the procedure going forward. I'll second that.
Okay, member Kachara.
Hi.
Member Marshall.
Hi.
Member Shannon.
Hi.
Member Loda.
Hi.
And chairperson Belistras.
Hi.
Motion carries.
So are there any other revisions to the minutes? And thank you for pointing that out. That was a big addition. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, member Kachara.
Hi.
Member Marshall.
Hi.
Member Loda.
Hi.
Member Shannon.
Hi.
And chairperson Belistras.
Bye.
Motion carries.
Okay, um, we had a request from the mayor to talk about a pollinator garden that they want to do at Village Hall. I do not see her in attendance. Is there anyone that wants to, that was prepared to discuss this item?
Sorry, I don't have any knowledge of this item.
Nor do I, other than I heard it was a request. I have no documents about it, so I don't know anything about what was to be discussed. Okay. This might be a real pretty quick meeting then. The, I guess, the agenda list discussion of temporary zoning issues. There is a, I wanted to discuss about temporary use permit. I guess that they used to be called temporary zoning permits. Before that, maybe I do want to give a brief update on something. I did have a discussion with the mayor a couple of days ago. Bounced around a whole bunch of different topics. And I also have been talking to Renee about the bridge construction, and I presume people would have some interest in what's going on in the, the bridge over the Erie Canal. I'd saw them starting to make the molds for the sidewalks, and they looked like they were a little narrower than before. And what I found out from Renee is the sidewalks going over the, the bridge are going to be about six and a half feet wide. And they're narrowing the travel lanes and making room for bike lanes on both sides. So they're trying, so the goal, hopefully, is to have a 10-foot travel lane, which is slightly narrower than normal. Somewhere around five and a half to six foot wide bike lanes, and then the six and a half foot wide sidewalks on each side. So when we took a look at the active transportation plan, I know, John, you weren't here, but we had many, a meeting to discuss that and talk about, we gave a lot of feedback, actually, to the trustees about changes they can make. And what we had identified was the bridges were in poor shape for supporting transportation through both walkers and bikers, and all of the bridges needed help. So they amended the plan to do that. And so it's, I think it's great to hear that at least that's supposedly what's going to happen. I hear a lot of comments that the DOT isn't always the most cooperative agency. So we'll have to see what actually gets built. I know getting them to do narrower lanes is, I've always heard that's a tough thing. But even if it's four foot wide or four and a half foot wide bike lanes, that's an improvement of what was there before, which was none at all. So I just want to update everyone on that. I think that's an encouraging development, as long as that actually is what gets built.
Is there an update on the completion date?
I have no idea when it's going to be completed. I've heard it's going to be maybe in a few weeks, so in July. I love it being, the bridge being out. My street ends there, and I can just breeze right out there, no fighting with traffic. I have to take interesting routes to get out of my house on the Mineral Avenue, because the end of my street, I'll get T-boned in a hurry if I normally do that. So having lack of traffic there is, is nice. So pulling out at the end of the bridge is not something that is I would encourage people to do, because people fly over the bridges typically. So. But anyway, so that was the summary on the bridge. I can't think of many. I did hear from the mayor that they're interested in doing around the code updates. And that leads into some of this temporary use permit thing. And she is interested in knowing what some of the top five issues are. Maybe if anyone has anything, I know that we've had a few things we've stumbled with. But the temporary use permits is, was like top of my list of concerns. Sign code is another thing that I know is in much need of updates. And Mindy might even be more aware of it than the rest of us. I don't think any of the temporary signs has even code has been updated for the Supreme Court challenges that declared them free speech. So I think there's plenty of things that are, it also hasn't been updated for our newer zoning district names and stuff like that. So there's a bunch of things in there. Did anyone else have anything that came to mind as being a top priority thing to them? You can think about it.
Would this be a time to bring up expansion of the tavern overlay?
I, I think that's a fine thing, and I guess actually you bring up a good point. And there's all these special use permits that are on the books, and I've observed the trustees having these lengthy discussions over a hair salon, special use permit for a hair salon with two seats. And they're not bothering anybody. Seems like you can just go back to the way they were before and just make about permitted use, in my opinion. So I would be, I, I think looking at some of those use tables could make sense. And you, looking at the boundaries of the tavern overlay district. I mean, it makes sense to me.
I also think that with regards to like special use permits, the more likely you have a fixed opportunity, like by right, business opportunity, the more likely you're going to have a developer or a business come in and, and consider moving forward with proposals and an application for new development or redevelopment than if it's by special use permit, because that special use permit creates a, an obstruction or an impediment to moving forward with designs that might otherwise be by right. And it may seem like a small thing, but I think as a business owner or developer, that sort of thing, the more, the more that we can move towards by right, the better. My biggest challenge with that is, is on all zones, the periphery of those zones have a bleeding effect into the other zones. And, and so I, I always recognize that special use permits grant the boards, be it the, the Board of Trustees or our own, the opportunity to be subjective enough to ensure that there's not a persistent bleed, for example, of a tavern overlay, for example. And as it slowly moves to encroach upon residential areas, it gives me some cause for concern. Go ahead, Mindy.
Yeah, that's, in my opinion, that's a misuse of the special use permit tool. A special use permit is appropriate where you have a use that is permitted in the underlying zoning district. But because of certain unique operational features related to that use, the, the municipality wants to have additional control over aspects of the operations that may be problematic. So typically, you see special use permits with things like bars, recreational facilities, things where you'll be attracting a large group of people for bursts of time. Place, you know, situations where you may have, you need to control hours of operation, noise within the district. But it's not something that should be used to taper off certain types of uses within the district. I mean, that's a zoning issue. That's something that needs to be permitted as of right or not. It's not a special permit issue.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Appreciate clarification. And this, to some extent, is a learning process for me. Is there a, how then, with regards to code, are things like those transitions between the zones generally handled?
It's not uncommon for municipalities to have transitional zones that have increasingly restrictive requirements. So you don't have a single-family residential zone, a budding, a densely populated commercial zone, you know, typically in larger municipalities. I mean, the Village of Pittsburgh is so small.
Yeah, we go straight.
You may not have room to have transitional.
Yeah, we go straight from a business zone.
But typically, that's how it's handled.
Right. So in the case where we only have a road that separates the two.
Right.
How is it, again, through the, the zoning or the code, are those things addressed? Or is it, is that you apply the same standard to the entire zone? So for example, right, okay, so that's one of the values of having special use permits across the aggregate zone. Again, I sound like I'm using it wrong.
No, you're using it right. It's just, you know, it's, it's not the way special use permits are supposed to be used. They're supposed to be used for more operational issues than strictly use issues.
Okay, how then are strict use? So for example, and again, is this the right venue to have this discussion?
I think it's reasonable thing to hear. I mean, we have some newer members and people have been around, and I think it's a good general introduction to zoning. That sounds good to me.
Okay, so take for example, as we think about updates to the code, if in looking at the, the business district at Four Corners, and over time, we start to get hopefully more and more restaurants or opportunities for the community to engage in the village, and all of a sudden it starts to get, let's say, busier and busier, which is great, louder and louder. How do we, how does that get addressed if that starts to, again, have an adverse effect on the immediate residential?
It starts with comprehensive planning. I mean, that's where all the zoning decisions are supposed to start. You develop a plan for your vision of the community, and the zoning ordinance is a tool that you use to implement the vision. If, if the vision isn't working, then the, the remedy is to take another look at the comprehensive plan and tweak it.
So I, I think I've heard is that there is no way to regulate the quantity of a business. I know I've heard the trustees talk about this quite a bit. It's like, well, it's okay to have a few bars or a few restaurants, but we don't want 50 bars and 50 restaurants. And so I don't think they ever had a good answer for that. I mean, I tend to think that the free market does a pretty good job of preventing things like that from happening. You're not going to get an excessive amount if there isn't demand for it. But you know, and so I think there's been a lot of hesitation to expanding the tavern overlay district for reasons like that. So they wanted to start out with a fairly narrow location, basically where existing bars are, are located. And I know some people had trepidations about substantially expanding that. And, you know, that's not really in our purview to set those boundaries. We can individually have opinions, but I know that's, I mean, that was the concern that they, they caused them to keep it fairly small.
John, you're muted.
And have we historically used special use permits to allow expansion outside of the zone? Is that, is that the problem we're running into? We're not using the special use permit appropriately? We've allowed expansion outside of the zone through a special use permit?
Uh, no, that's not the case. So there is a tavern overlay district, John, and that sets the parcels that are eligible to be a tavern, and a tavern is essentially a bar. There's a much larger district where restaurants are allowed, and restaurants can serve alcohol as well. So the distinguishing factor is a restaurant gets the majority of its revenue from food, and a tavern gets the majority of its revenue from alcohol sales. And I think what Mindy's comments about the special use permits let you set conditions for, she's explained it before, as some of these soft matters, like hours of operation. So if you have a restaurant, you can say, okay, well, you're allowed, but you're near a residential district, so your hours of operation can't be beyond 10 p.m. That type of thing is, allows them to do that. But you can only do it if you're in a zone eligible to get a permit for it. So you can lock in the parcels allowed. And the tavern overlay district is a parcel-by-parcel one. All, most of the other regulations we have applied to much larger funding districts.
Gotcha.
So anyway, there, there is nothing that's been of more debate than regulating restaurants and bars in the village over, I don't know, what, the last five, seven, eight years? How long do you think that's gone on, Susan?
Oh, at least that long. And let's throw in parking.
I was just gonna go to parking. I was just going to go to parking.
Yeah.
Parking's been much in, in debate as well. And so debating as to where restaurants go is what led to the comprehensive plan updates. Because they decided what Pearl and Mindy said, well, let's start with a comprehensive plan instead of figuring out how we're going to change it. Let's see where long-term plan is going to be and let the committee come up with recommendations based on input from residents and the committee members, which I, that I agree that was a good start. Also, John, since you're newer here, we used to only have special use permits for restaurants and a few things that were larger attendees are present. So churches used to be one. When those, if you want to create a church, I think funeral homes have always been one. Another one used to be things like yoga studios and then those types of things where you can have a classroom where you can have, I think is what Mindy said, you can have a burst of 50 people or 20 people. And by having a special use permit that allows you to set a cap on the max number of people as a so-called soft requirement that goes in there. But the big one has always been restaurants. I can't think of more than, I can count on one hand, the number of special use permits that have happened over the last 10 years that were not a restaurant or bar. But when we did the code updates in 2019, they greatly expanded the number of things that were subject to special use permit. So I believe we can pull it up if someone wanted to look or you can look on your own, might be even better. But things like any property with a building over 2,000 square feet, I think is on there. Which means that if Bank of America, I hear is closing, another bank wants to buy it and open up there, I don't see why we should have any concerns over that. But if it's over 2,000 square feet, they need a special use permit. And per what Dave said, I think a business would like more certainty than that. So I think that was intended to be able to really take a fine look at parking. As I heard that was said, as parking and, and bars and restaurants are two things that have been often debated by the trustees. So I think that was some of the rationale for it. And knowing that larger buildings can be more intensive use, but that was the one that never made any sense to me. And there's a whole bunch of things like that. Hair salons was another one that didn't make a lot of sense to me because hair salons don't really bother anybody. They're not open late. They don't make any noise. I know there, some people think there's a lot of them, but they, as I said before, I think the free market will work it out and they're not bothering anybody. So if they're profitable, so be it.
The free market can't work it out if you put imposed restrictions, right?
Right.
We have, we have 10 hair salons and no restaurants.
Then let me ask you, Justin, with regards to your conversation with the mayor. In that conversation, was it suggested that there was going to try to be one code update that applies to all of the code? Or are they trying to address just a specific element of the code? And to that end, our conversations, what's the time period and what's the scope by which they might be looking for comment?
My understanding is there, I've been stating for a while that we have some concerns and Steve has his own list of concerns too. The mayor was interested in making a round of code updates. You know, in the, let's just say the near future, I don't know when that'll be. It's not been promised. There's been plenty of other stuff preoccupying the trustees. You know, the mayor's new, had to deal with the budget, had to deal with the, there's plenty of other stuff going on. So I understand it takes a while to get to some other stuff like this. But the, the understanding I had is there's going to be a push to get some of the more urgent things dealt with and hopefully they're fairly easy. And then a follow-up sometime later to have larger discussions over things that may take some more time to work out. And we have a new, we have a new board, so I imagine they're going to have their own policy changes. They're going to want to enact.
Do you know what those urgent updates are and if we should plan to make comment within a month or two months?
I have no information as to when and know the, the list of items to be addressed is, is not established. Like I haven't had no conversations with Steve about it. I know he has his list. I'm sure some trustees have their list. So I think this needs to come out, but I don't know when that's going to happen. So if anyone has thoughts, we shared a few here. You're welcome to go and do your own cursory review of code. And we can continue discussions at our meetings if we have late meetings.
I like the idea of picking a subject and then trying to spend a half hour, 45 minutes, or you know, maybe just a half hour, whatever it may be, assembling the, our perspective and then being able to share it on the topics of significance that the board is looking to enact. I would hate for the board and Steve to proceed forward with code updates without asking for our opinion. Should it be a matter applicable to, you know, what we do?
It seems like to, so if I'm understanding you correctly, Justin, it seems like two rounds, it seems like a first round that are really non-controversial fixes that ease current issues that with, with the code and then a second round that's going to need more thought and consideration and discussion. Is that, is that right?
That's exactly what was stated to me, but that's just a conversation with the mayor. I don't know what the thoughts are of other trustees and finances come into play big time with this because someone needs to actually work on these. And if they have to hire consultants to assist with recommendations, that needs to be a budget item and I don't believe there is any budget for major code work in this year's budget. Mr. Lightgibb, do you have any comments on, on the budget and if any of these things are, you're aware of?
Sure. Yeah, just, just really briefly, I, I have not spoken with the mayor about this recently, but I, I do know that periodically we submit changes to be encoded to general code. And it's more cost effective if we batch those things up. So I know that the building inspector has this list. There are lots of just zone renaming things, as you've mentioned. And I, I think that personally, and I, I can't speak for the full board here, but I think that it would be really great to get the planning board's thoughts in an advisory capacity on, on different areas of the code that we're looking to update. And so specifically we've, we've had topics we've discussed lately, including a possible location of a food cart or a food truck. And I don't think that's something that our current code addresses. Personally, I would really like to hear if the planning board has thoughts on that. And we've, we've talked about other things like not, not recently on the board, but other things like short-term rentals have come up before. I think that it would be really great to get some thoughts on kind of bigger picture items like that, in addition to the nitty gritty details where things might not be holding together. So those are just a couple of, of my thoughts personally, again, not from necessarily from the board of trustees, but I think that it would be good to keep regularly updating with some inaccuracies and, and minor things that need to be updated. And then I'd also love to hear from the planning board and get thoughts on bigger picture. You know, is there like an overlay for food carts or something like that? And where would that go? Since that is something that there's been some interest in recently.
Does anyone want to start with comments? I could follow up, but I will give someone else the opportunity to start.
On the food cart matter?
That sounds like a good one to me.
Susan?
Well, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind thinking this over for a, a little bit. And you know,
Great.
Not, not using, you know, perhaps this meeting time, you know, with Mindy on board, you know, to collect my thoughts. I think we should approach these updates in a, kind of in a more organized way. You know, maybe agended with something that we can all think about, you, you know, in advance. I mean, that's just my, my feeling tonight.
I think that's good. I like public opinion on the matter too. I mean, there's, I think agenda, putting it down on the agenda item, whether or not it's food carts or parking or the tavern overlay expansion. Making sure residents have some info would be nice.
Short-term rentals, I think Justin mentioned.
Yeah.
That's probably an interesting topic that.
Yeah.
It could Airbnb, right, mostly?
Well, yeah, Airbnb, VRBO, right. But you'll get an interesting public comment, right? Which is the most important part.
cannabis dispensaries.
Yeah.
The rates are coming out. I mean, they're going to be up this year. You know, the village is going to decide whether to opt in or opt out and if they're, if they're anywhere, it's going to go.
Question as well. Couple of things that I think about long-term are, you know, developing opportunities for additional apartment rentals in the village, whether or not it might be, again, these are all hypotheticals. Certain parcels have significant size, like the pickle factory or the storage facility, even Shane Place, potentially new applications as well for other areas. For applications of size, particularly apartment, but also potentially for sale units like condos. Are there any opportunities to create affordable housing as part of that, the, the context of that discussion, depending on the number of units that might be created? If, is that something that we would have an input on or with regards to the code? And is that something that can be done?
We can, we can direct a few things to the members that were on the cop plan committee. My understanding is our code and the cop plan specifically recommended that more opportunities exist for multifamily and mixed use. And the vision for that was allowing buildings, allowing apartments to go over top of buildings in the downtown business district to do second and third floor apartments over buildings in Shane Place. And over in the pickle factory and all of these. So I think mixed use was a lot of the vision here of having commercial and retail and restaurants on the first floor and, and then having apartments, condos, whatever on subsequent floors. I had, I don't think there is, I don't remember anything about affordable housing in the comprehensive plan. I don't know if any member that worked on that want to comment on that. Susan, does that coincide with your thoughts on housing as well?
Absolutely. So mixed use was as, as far as we went.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, so the answer is, are there opportunities to build more rental or condos or things like that? And I think the answer is yes. There's big opportunities for that to significantly expand housing in the village. Whether it'll get built is up to the property owners, I think.
Okay, it's already embedded, other than the affordable element. Okay, great. No further comment.
So I'll just touch on, on one other thing briefly, because I know something about it with food trucks. I've worked with some food truck vendors on other things and retained them and talked to them about this. And their biggest thing is they want a predictable place they can do business. So if you have two, so they want to know what spots are allowed to use. And they don't want to, they don't want to have 10 trucks competing for two spots. So I think those are the, the big things. So, and I think they want a relatively easy process because I don't think they have any patience for spending two months chasing permits. So, and they also don't want to spend a lot of money for it. So I would think my suggestion would be make it easy, say where they can operate and say what they need to do to get a permit and not give out more permits than there are spaces. Those would be my suggestions.
So to, to Susan's point, is it worth kind of identifying two or three of these issues and just set, you know, putting on the agenda for the next meeting so we can, you know, all kind of think about it and plus it gives the public an opportunity to maybe show up and voice some opinion?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. So here's my suggestion for that. We can always add member items to the agenda. And we should find out shortly as to how much we have on the agenda. So if anyone has a particularly code-related topic that interests them, by all means, contact Marina and say, I would like to discuss this at the meeting. And we'll put it on the agenda. Does that sound fair enough? We don't need to decide tonight.
Okay. That sounds good.
Sounds great.
Regarding agenda items, I know we have the normal agenda items and then we have member items. Oftentimes I've seen agendas. I think the board of trustees does this where it just simply says agenda, A, B, C, and then member items. But the member items aren't necessarily disclosed in advance. For our board, it might be nice, I think, particularly in, you know, like we were just talking about, for those member items to be provided that's possible, notated in advance on the agenda. I think that's a nice service to the public if we intend to talk about it as a member item.
Yeah, service to the public and each other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They got to have the prize member items.
Right, yeah.
And I think Mindy can comment on this, but I think there's nothing that makes a developer more nuts than someone talking about their project in a meeting without it being listed as an agenda item. So I, we've seen when larger projects come along, sometimes they send their attorneys to every single meeting, just because no one ever knows when something is going to be discussed, which is unfortunate. So I think having a general policy of anything that might be of interest, putting it on the agenda is useful. But that said, things like what's going on in the bridge that I mentioned earlier, I'm not sure that really makes that big a difference that we need to specifically call it out on the agenda. That was just something that I had a brief discussion on Friday about.
I, I think that's good. I mean, I just did the same thing with the Zoom meeting, but generally if we know in advance, we'd like to talk about some stuff. It, it'd be great to maybe put on the agenda item. The other thing that might be nice on the agenda, and I don't think we've done it up till now, but I'm just thinking about it here with a few guests from the public, members of the public participating. Would it be nice to have just in public discussion or, or open, open conversation with the public? So should they like to give us any comment, whatever the topic may be? Just have a brief period of time at the end of each meeting where they're afforded an opportunity to share with us, comment, should it be necessary or of interest?
I have no concerns about doing something like that. And particularly if you have real meetings, people usually aren't shy about raising their hands and saying, hey, can I talk about this? I think many of us have done that in trustee meetings and stuff like that. Yeah. I mean, I'm kind of presiding over the meeting, but I've never been one that really wants to shut off discussion. I think more information is always helpful for us. So. Mindy?
I was going to say, just let's think this through a little more before you make a decision to have like a, a public forum part of the meeting. I mean, essentially the PCBA's job is to evaluate applications that are submitted to you and not get bogged down in matters of general policy or in, you know, having people come in and ask you to write their applications for them and, right, you know, stuff like that. So you know, it, it might be nice to get some feedback, but think about what type of feedback you'll be soliciting and why.
So the, the reason I had brought that up was things like the food truck or with parking. How is it then we at all solicit public input?
You don't. I mean, that's really something for the trustees to address. You know, this board is charged with reviewing applications.
You apply the, apply the rules and the regulations and move forward.
So to the extent that there's code updates and they're asking for our opinion, that truly is just the opinion of?
That's, that's different. I mean, the, the, any of the boards can make a referral to this board to seek, you know, an opinion regarding to a zoning matter.
So in this case, it's more, you know.
Than asking the public to approach you with matters of public interest.
We, we provide the topic and we seek input on that topic, not, we ask, not asking the public for a topic and then allowing an open discussion to go on for three hours.
Right.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that. The one change I would say is the other half of our mission, which we don't necessarily do a lot of, is planning. We are totally authorized to do whatever planning endeavors we want. It could be recommending a tourism policy to the trustees. It could be, it's pretty open-ended. We're just limited to whatever budget we get. And that doesn't mean the trustees are going to do anything with it. And typically that's the big limiter on this is whatever ideas we have, we have no authority to carry them out. And we are totally dependent on the trustees. And if they're motivated to work on it, they'll usually initiate it. And um, we are totally dependent on the trustees. And if they're motivated to work on it, they'll usually initiate it themselves.
Great. Right. And in, in my opinion, that stuff, if, if it comes from this board would very appropriately arise out of an application that you've reviewed. Where you found something that wasn't working in the code or something that was missing that needed to be fixed.
Right.
But not to brainstorm general policy issues to bring to the trustees.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think this was good discussion. Um, any other things people want to add up before we briefly talk about temporary use permits? Okay, um, I just wanted to, I passed around the document that just links to sections of code. Marina, do you think you could just briefly pull this up? I just want to make people aware of what code uh, has been involved with these. And if we want to get into this a little bit, we can. If we don't, we don't need to. Uh, so. I, I don't even know if all of our new members have even gotten into any of our code. But at least in this document, there's a whole bunch of hyperlinks in here that you can click on if you want to. But um, I mean, the starting point to figuring out what you can do with your property is clicking on the zoning map. Um, so Marina, maybe if you want to just click on that link there. So zoning map in the first sentence, yep, that should come up. Oh, okay. I guess we can't do any of that then. Well, you guys could take a look at it on your own. Um, but the zoning map shows where all the boundaries are. And I think, John, you had asked about this, that shows the zoning districts and also shows the tavern overlay district. I don't know if you've looked up this, the zoning map before or not, but it's on the village website.
I, I just, I just got your email. I clicked it. I got it.
Okay. Um, and I mean, basic, the basic, if you want to figure out what you could do with your property, the first thing you do is you open the zoning map and you see what zoning district it's in. And then you go to the use requirements for that zoning district, which are outlined, uh, I listed those. Uh, in the next four bullets there. And then uh, that will tell you is a hair salon allowed, is a uh, single family home allowed, that type of thing. The, our code is also structured, for those of you that are newer to it. Uh, so first of all, there's a zoning districts and then there's regulations for the district. But then there's use specific regulations and that's that next little section there where that fifth bullet is, it says two, 10, 24. A bunch of different uses have regulations. So restaurants have regulations, I think hair salons have regulations. This one here, outdoor assembly, display. Sales, display and storage areas is one that applies to us. Because uh, the zoning board is authorized to make. To issue temporary use permits. And this sets all the use specific requirements for temporary use permits. I bolded three significant ones. Uh, one of them is it can't be in a residential district. And that's been one that has been a thorny issue because these are typical, if we take a look at temporary events. In the village, they're typically in a church or a school or the community center or some larger thing that. All of these happen to be in a residential district. So I think all the churches are in residential districts, the community centers in a residential district. The library, I believe, is in a commercial district. So I think that's about. The, uh, I could be wrong, but I think the library is about the only parcel in a commercial district that's large. And, and actually holds um, temporary events. So uh, and then the next section of code there is article 39, temporary use permits. And that's at the bottom of this page. And that regulates review procedures and application requirements. So. That lists all the criteria we need to look at and all the criteria that are supposed to be part of an application. And for the most part, we have our little templates for decisions that we go off of. So the review procedures are rolled into those templates. So whatever the code says they're supposed to look at, we make a few sentences for each of those things. As to whether it complies or does not comply with it. So that goes into our decisions. So uh. That's all I wanted to say necessarily initially. Does anyone else have any? Want any, go to any further on anything or we can just, you can just look at it on your own and we can follow up um, in a subsequent discussion. And many of you may be familiar with these.
Good review, really good.
Mindy, did you have any comments? You're muted, Mindy. Nope, okay. Um, so I mentioned I wanted to make some changes to temporary use permits and they're a problem, but. I think one of the big things that would be the biggest improvement is to list what is. What requires a temporary use permit? So looking at all of the districts and the use tables and figuring out, okay, should this occur? Are there more things we need to add to this or not? So for example. If you were to add uh, some type of, you know, events in. Some type of events, whatever they happen to be, and you wanted to allow them in residential districts, well, you could add it to the use table. If you want to let, add farmer's markets as a temporary use, you could add it to the use tables. I see Mindy shaking her head though.
Is this, uh, are, are these our decisions, Justin?
These aren't our decisions. These would be the trustees' decisions.
Right.
If we had any thoughts as for things that we think. Should be allowed. Um, that have, one of the big problems is we used to look at these a lot. And now we're not because the code changed. So a lot of things we used to look at are gone. So if the Buffalo Bills want to come back, again, they're in a residential district. Um, the, the temporary use permits don't apply to them. The farmer's market is coming before the trustees tomorrow. We used to look at farmer's markets, but they're in a residential district, so um, we're not looking at those. Uh, they adopted some new code and I still don't even have a copy of the code that was adopted. That allows the trustees to look at. Whatever somebody wants to do um, that falls outside the zoning code. And I think that uh, was specifically for temporary merchant type activities. And again, I don't have a copy of that final law, so I don't know um, what it says in detail right now.
Okay.
So if we don't, if we shouldn't be cha, if you think we shouldn't be chasing any of this and making recommendations, knowing that the trustees are. Uh, it's, it's the trustees to deal with. Uh, but one, one thing that I think is really critical, that's been a real thorn in our side is um, if you take a look. And uh, towards the bottom of the page, that last bullet where it says, uh, assembly, sales and display requirements. Uh, we ran into this with the Pittsburgh Panthers and the Christmas tree sales. It says that if you're doing outside sales or assembly, then it's supposed to be within 20 feet of a building. And that just doesn't make much sense for a temporary event. So that's one we've had an issue um, dealing with that I think should be revised.
Justin, I don't know whether you're planning to put this on the list of things that we discuss in the future. But um. One of the things to consider if the board were to make some comments to the trustees is that. The temporary use permit. Um, under the code is something that could be granted for six months and then we're, you know, renewed for two year periods and then you need again and. It's not temporary. If you can keep doing that. Essentially what it allows is the um, municipal body who is issuing a permit to essentially. Issue a use variance for a property without going through the criteria for use variances. I mean, there's some bigger global issues. That transcend what temporary uses should be permitted where. And some of these issues really would be, but more appropriately addressed. Um, by identifying uh, permitted accessory uses to some. Uses within a district instead of trying to micromanage these things as temporary uses.
Right.
You know, like, you know, the, the thing that, that leaps out to me is outdoors, outdoor sales, displayed storage areas. I mean. That's something, in my opinion, that doesn't need especially a, a temporary use permit. That's something that ought to be an accessory use to a commercial or retail use. So that's. Uh, and so I didn't think that now was the time that you wanted to have that conversation. I mean, there's a bigger, there's a bigger issue with the.
Mm hmm.
Ever use permits that um, if we were to address, that we should address.
So, thank you, Mindy, for your comment.
We just, because I don't get to address anything, so.
So, so why, you know, I think to Susan's point, I mean. I think we just put a couple of things on the agenda for the next meeting, so everybody's. Prepared and can read through it and we can come to discuss, right?
Yeah, absolutely. If you guys have um, a matter you want to discuss and you want to write up. A few thoughts on the matter in a one page document or email or, you know, kind of paraphrase what you want to look at, we can just throw it in the meeting packet and agenda and. Then everyone can see it. And uh, as long as this comes out like a week or so before the meeting, so we can easily get it on the website. Um, then even the public, if they want to peruse the website and see what we're talking about, they'll see it in the meeting packet and they can come and join us.
Yep.
Yeah, so I, I think I agree with what Mindy says. Um, and for the most part, all the temporary things we've seen. Are like one day events or three day events. But for the most part, uh, the Christmas tree sales goes up, uh, goes on for 30 days. The farmer's market sometimes goes on for several months. That's the only thing I can think of that's, that I've ever seen come around that is longer. But that could be better handled by just making farmer's markets a permitted use and setting regulations for farmer's markets. It doesn't need to be a, I, I mean, that's where I would tend to think is, let's figure out what we're doing. Uh, for having temporary events that are one to three days of events or something like that. You can just say that's permitted use or set requirements for it. Um, I think that's fine.
Didn't the board change, didn't the board, the trustees change their, change the? The regulation such that it goes directly to the board of trustees now for a vote, like the farmer's market?
Right.
Right? So that's not even before the PCBA any longer.
It, it used to be until a month, uh, until the, the new code was adopted back in 2019.
Okay.
And then this clause up here where we can't, they're always granted as temporary permits. And uh, so all this stuff used to come to us. And the only thing that went to the trustees was it was on village owned property. And that, that makes sense for the, if it's their property, they should be reviewing it. But.
So being a person here. If they just change the, the regs to send that directly to the board of trustees. Is it even, do we even need to walk into that discussion?
Um, usually we're reluctant uh, to get into spats with the trustees about who's gonna review something. So if they want to review it, they win.
But I, I guess that's my point. They just, they just changed the rules such that they get to review it. So. Are we kind of going in circles here? Talking about changing the regulations such that they don't have to even go to the board? I mean, it seems like they, they, they took over control and they want to review it. So. Let them review it, right? Now?
Yeah.
That's one way of looking at it.
Well, that's what they did, right? They, they changed the rules to do that? Oh, I get, Justin, you were here before, right?
Justin has his hand up.
Or, um, yeah, I clicked the raise hand button. I don't know how well that works, but um, I, my understanding is that we did not intentionally. Take this over because we want discretion over those items. It was because there uh, the, the code didn't allow it to be considered by the planning board any longer. And so then we, we wrote this specific code to get around that. So we'd be able to approve uses like the, uh, the hot dog stand and, and things like that. So my, my understanding is that that's a, a short term retail code is a, a short term fix. Um, and my intent at least has been to, to get the temporary permit code back in order so that um, your board could consider. Those items again. I, I, again, I can't speak for the entire board, but that was my understanding of it.
So was that an oversight when the language went in there to, to move that decision to the board of trustees and not the PCBA?
I think so. I, I didn't hear anything to the contrary, so that's the way that I understood it personally.
Yeah, and John, we have a new um, board of trustees now, uh, and a new mayor. And I'm presuming they're gonna want to change their own directions on some things. All of our code, um, and I don't know what that's going to be. Um, I don't think any of them necessarily do either. I'm sure the mayor has some ideas of what they'd like to do, but they're only one member. Um, but anyway, so I think the way things are now isn't necessarily the, the way they want to go, but. This new board has only been around for what, two months? So, and there's plenty, dealing with the budget and other stuff has been a full effort until now. Um, one other thing I want to comment on that Mindy mentioned was outdoor sales and display. And as long as I can remember, uh, the village has banned basically outdoor everything and said business has to be conducted indoors. With the exception of outside dining. Um, and you know, for whatever that's worth, um, correct or not. Uh, that's how it's been. And um, outside storage, I think some of that are things like, there's been problems with people running. Say um, a landscaping company and then storing their tools and equipment outside and not looking great. Uh, so there used to be snowplows and stuff like that stacked up in Shane Place, um, where um. There was a landscaping company in there a few years ago. I don't think they're, I don't know if they're there anymore. But that's just an example. I don't know where that should go, but I'm just saying that's how it's been.
So then we'll delay further discussion on this till our next meeting and it's presumed we'll have enough time for comment to the board of trustees.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any imminent work by the trustees. Um, Mr. Lightgib, are you aware of any?
Oh, we don't have any code uh, discussions scheduled right now. Um, but I, I think that it would be great if, if we could have some of the, the more straightforward changes, you know, maybe uh. Um, I think it would be great if we could tweak the temporary permit codes that is usable again in, in residential districts if, if that would solve some of the problems that we've come across. Um, again, that's my personal opinion, but if, if there are some simpler changes, um, I, I think that you should forward them across and we can consider them. And, and send them up with the next batch if they're easy enough to make. Um, just as another minor aside too, I, I did notice that 189, um, the new short term retail code that was adopted does not seem to be posted. So I'll bring that up tomorrow and, and see if we can put that online somewhere, even if it's not in the um, uh, the general code, main section of code, but it could just be off to the side as we've done in the past.
Yeah, they, that, that's not anywhere. I asked Rupia for it once, but um, she didn't get back to me on that. So mo, all your other laws that I can think of are, might, are posted there, uh, except that one.
Yep, that seems like an oversight. I'll bring it up. Thank you.
I have a question on temporary banners. Is now the right time to field that?
I mean, we're throwing stuff out there. I don't mind, but we, we should be winding this down, I think. I think uh, if you want to briefly bring it up, we, uh, what your thoughts are and we can. Uh, flesh it out and discuss it more um, in our next meeting.
I don't know if it's anything we can do. I know we used to have a lot of the, uh, the sign. Um, approvals under our board. Right now there is a temporary banner. Um, code that allows the building inspector. Uh, to approve and uh, place banners within the central business district based on uh. Uh, events held within the village of Pittsburgh. Um, I, you know, I'm excited about the Monroe Invitational on July 5th through 10th. And the village board, I believe, were by permit, building inspector has approved banners to be hung within the central business district. In support of the Monroe Invitational. Uh, regrettably, uh, Monroe Golf Club is outside the village and I am unaware of any municipal events. Regrettably, Monroe Golf Club is outside the village and I am unaware of any municipal events. Approved by or held within the village. And I just have some concern as to whether or not we. Have any ability to do anything differently there, or maybe it's just an observation and let it stand as it is.
If, if anyone has thoughts on what to do with temporary signs, I think there's a whole, that's a huge issue. And that might need to wait for a larger update, is my thought. Is if, I mean, you want businesses to put sandwich signs up, that used to be allowed, is now banned. We used to have signs up at Four Corners for any event that was going on in the village and then that got curtailed. And what prohibited. There's all kinds of changes you can make to sign code. I, I gathered that, I'm thinking it was about seventy-eight years ago. The thought was there are too many random signs up all over the place, so they decided to clamp down on it fairly uniformly. And say, no, we're, we're going to get rid of this. We don't want all this visual clutter. Let's cut down signs. We're only going to allow things for X, Y, and Z. And so that's what they did. I can't tell you what the new, the current trustees would like to do, but I, I think this is something that is open to plenty of discussion. And I don't think this would be a quick and easy change to code because I'm sure there's plenty of opinions that'll go around. That's my comment, at least, so. I think it makes sense to wind down now. Is there anything else? I don't, I don't think there's anything else on our agenda. And other than the. The mayor is not here, but wanted to talk about the garden. If they want to talk about it again, I presume no one has any objections to adding that to our next meeting. Marina, do you know if we had any new applications for next month?
Um, there is just one for Margot Fass and I can send it to you tomorrow.
Is that for a temporary permit?
I'm, I'm not entirely sure. I think she wants it for a sign, um, but she's, she's trying to have. I'm sorry, I don't fully understand it, but Steve is aware. He, I guess she's trying to have a business in a, in her home or something or along those lines. And she wants to have a sign for it. So he's kind of thinking it might be a waste of the board's time. But obviously, he's going to bring it to you guys because that's his function. But that's.
So it would be a sign variance, you think?
Something like that, yes.
All right, well, I guess we'll find out.
I can, like I said, I can send it to you tomorrow. I'm sorry, I don't know too much about it.
Oh, that's okay. I was just wondering if we were having anything at all for the most part, but it sounds like we may have one application. So. Keep that in mind. Did anyone want to talk anything about the pavilion or save that for another time? I'm thinking saving that for another time.
Another time.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Is there a second?
Silence. All right, I'll second it.
Okay, member Katura.
You know what's going on a limb on that one.
You're left hanging. You're off the cliff. I'm, normally that is so quick to get a response.
Um, member Katura?
Hi.
Um, member Loda?
Hi.
Member Shannon?
Hi.
Member Marshall?
Hi.
And Chairperson Belistras.
Hi.
Motion carries. Good night, everybody.